Welcome to this week's St. Clair County Board of Commissioners meeting. The types of business that occur at these meetings include public hearings, official voting on actions by the Board of Commissioners, presentations by departments of the county, and recognition of service that makes our county great. As your elected representatives, the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners is committed to improving the lives of all our residents while preparing county government to meet the demands of the future. In order to do that, we need to share our thoughts and plans with you. More importantly, we need you to share your thoughts, concerns, and opinions with us. We encourage you to come and experience the process by attending any of these meetings. They occur every first and third Thursday of the month at 6:00 PM at the St. Clair County Administration Building at 200 Grand River Avenue in Port Huron.
Going to call the meeting order. Stand for the pledge, please.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Commissioner Samasco.
Here.
Commissioner Tomian.
Here.
Commissioner Heidemann.
Here.
Commissioner Riley.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing.
Here.
Commissioner Bowman.
Here.
Additions, deletions, changes to the agenda. Do I have a motion to accept?
I move the approval of the agenda as presented.
For. A second. One thing. You got something?
Let me make sure.
Do we care to hear from Greg Hill tonight? Equalization report. He gave us the equalization report last time. We just got to make a motion to file it. So unless you guys want to hear this. Mr. Hill, you're excused.
I want to talk about that contract with Elgin Act though.
On the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item number five, minutes of previous meetings.
Mr. Chair, I move that the minutes of the March 21st, 2013 Commission Meeting and the April 4th, 2013 Standing Committee Meeting and the April 11th, 2013 Workshop Meeting be approved and filed. Support.
Discussion on any of these? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item number six, proclamation. Item A, the Elgin Act Clay Volunteers of the Year, Jay Campbell and Jay Grant.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I would move that the proclamation recognizing Jay Campbell and Jay Grant as the Elgin Act Clay Library Volunteers of the Year be approved. Support.
Discussion. Are you going to have those, get those to somebody?
Yes, I have both of them here and I will be attending the 6:00 PM, April 22nd presentation at the Elgin Act Clay Library Bridge. You are all invited, by the way. It's a very festive event and you are all welcome.
Okay.
Jay, I expect you to be there.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item number seven, consent agenda, items A through K.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that you approve items seven, A through seven, K on the consent agenda.
For. Discussion on any of them? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item number eight, reports of standing and special committees. Start with Mr. Graytop.
I had something, but I can't remember what it is.
What happens when you get old? Mr. Rushing.
I do not have anything.
Mr. Riley?
One comment I would have regarding road commission. I did have a meeting with them and I was, I got to admit, I was pretty impressed with their system, with the 35, 37 employees that they have reduced over a number of years. The way that they're working together and the ideas they've come up with to work within their budgets and cut, I thought was very commendable and I just want to make mention of that.
Okay, very good. Commissioner Samasco? For. Commissioner Tomian? Commissioner Heidemann?
Just a comment. I attended the, today, the St. Clair County Health Department meeting and they're working on preparing a document listing many of the reasons why the Medicare expansion should be supported. So they're going to make that available and give you some of the rationale.
Yeah, well, I think Debbie, correct me, are you here to talk a little bit about that tonight? Yes, so we will hear some of that, Howard.
Okay.
Okay, I'm going to take a pass. Moving on, item number nine, citizens to be heard. Any citizens wishing to address the board at this time? Seeing none, unfinished business, no unfinished business to come before us. New business, item A, Community Mental Health, Region 10, Prepaid Inpatient Health Plan Alignment. The new director of Community Mental Health, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you. Thanks for having me here to present to you. First of all, I don't know if everybody understands what a prepaid inpatient health plan is, or we call it a PIHP. It, in simple terms, it's, it's the name, St. Clair County Community Mental Health is a PIHP, which means we are contracted with the State of Michigan Department of Community Health to provide the Medicaid benefit, to actually oversee the Medicaid benefit, manage that Medicaid money for three counties currently, that's Santa Lac, Lapeer, and ourselves. Just a minute, I gotta find this little arrow. I'm not used to using this touch thing. There we go. Okay. And at the end, I'm also going to talk just a little bit about Medicaid expansion. So first of all, I know that since, since I asked to be on the agenda, the commissioners, or at least some of the commissioners, had questions regarding why is the state doing this? So I thought I would just kind of start. What is wrong? Sorry. Okay. And you sent an email to, I believe, Senator Phil Pavlo's office and he, in turn, sent that to the Department of Community Health. And I'm just, for those of you, in case you didn't all see the answers or the questions, the question is, first, was it the result of a law, governor's order, or consolidation of contracts determined by DCH? It is basically the last thing. And there, so there is no law. So the second part question was, can you obtain a copy of the law, order a request for consolidation proposals? There is no law, but they did refer you to a website that has this document, which is called the Application for Participation. This document was issued to us in mid-February. We had to respond to it by April 1st. We did that. And I brought two copies of this, if anybody wants it. I forgot to pass that out earlier, but it's here if you want it. It's not really riveting reading, but it's here if you would like to see it. The next question was, what are the responsibilities and liabilities of the existing parent organizations? And basically, the existing organizations, which are PIHPs and Community Mental Health Service Programs, are charged with managing the Medicaid benefit for all those who qualify and also providing same services to people who meet the mental health code criteria as priority populations, meaning they have a severe mental illness or developmental disability or substance use condition. And that continues. Oh, sorry. I'm not used to this particular thing. Anyways, is the consolidation or, is this the only consolidation of the PIHPs or were there additional administrative consolidations? The additional administrative consolidation that is also occurring is the integration of the coordinating agencies. You remember, I can't remember the full long acronym for the THUMM region, but several years ago, the THUMM region, it used to be operated through the Health Department. It was integrated into St. Clair County Community Mental Health to manage substance use benefit for people with Medicaid or no insurance for the three-county region quite a few years ago. So that is already integrated with us. It's also integrated with Genesee County, but in the end, we'll end up with one coordinating agency. So I'll get to that in a minute. Will it affect the operating budget or debt obligations? Basically, the existing PIHPs have to close out the fiscal year and then we have to settle our Medicaid contracts with the Department of Community Health and we have to, we would then transfer any, any reserves or any risk or debt to the new PIHP. So that's just, oh, I'm sorry.
A question, Debbie?
Yes.
On that, the debt obligation, I guess the thing we're concerned about is the one with the county for your new facility. That will then be paid out of the new consortium?
No, I believe that that will stay with St. Clair County Community Mental Health.
Okay.
That we would continue to take care of that. This next slide shows you the, the current structure in the State of Michigan. There are 18 PIHPs. The color coding shows the regions and the counties that are included in that. And then this is the regional map that was issued by the Department of Community Health in October of 2012. And you can see where we are located in the THUMM area with the addition of Genesee County. And we are referred to affectionately as Region 10. So this is the current structure too, of how we're currently set up. Genesee Health Systems are the PIHP managing entity for Genesee Community Mental Health and the coordinating agency. St. Clair County CMH, doing business as the THUMM Alliance, is the entity that has the current contract with the Department of Community Health for the Medicaid benefit for Lapeer, Santa Lac, St. Clair, and then the coordinating agency. This is what it will look like when we're all done. We have to actually create a new PIHP. Neither of the, neither of the CMHs can be the PIHP. They want it to be a separate entity, completely separate from either of the existing Community Mental Health Organizations. So we, we are in the process of trying to figure out the best way to establish that. We have not been given a lot of time to do that, but that's what we're working on. And then the Region 10 PIHP will manage over 200 million in Medicaid dollars for the four-county region and the coordinating agency for substance use services.
Yep, remind me again, PHIP?
Is Prepaid Inpatient Health Plan.
Prepaid Inpatient Health.
It's a term from like the BBA, the Balanced Budget Act. And I know I said, I was thinking I should have brought a list of acronyms for you because we sure use a lot of them.
If you use the full term one time, we'll catch up.
Okay.
Is that 200 million in additional monies or is that the total?
It's the total. And I'm going to get to a slide that shows you what Genesee brings to the table and what the THUMM Alliance brings. People asked, you know, why, why did the department decide to do this? You asked that question more specifically, like was it a law order? We asked from the very beginning because over a year, two years ago, they started talking about the complexity of the public mental health system, that there were too many contracts with the department to manage and it just was really all chaotic. And so we asked, what, what's broke that you're trying to fix, basically? You know, is there some outcomes you want to see? Do you want to see more savings? We were never given a specific answer. But some of the things that different people that work for the department say, including the new director, they all have said at least one of these things. Their hope is that it will increase efficiency overall, that we will consolidate administrative functions and reduce redundancies that they believe exist in the current system. They also intend to reduce the administrative burden related to the number of contracts that MDCH currently manages. That's kind of a funny one, I think, because in addition to the 18 PIHP contracts that they currently manage, they still have to manage the 46 CMH contracts because the Michigan Mental Health Code says that they have to contract with Community Mental Health Service Programs for the general fund benefit for people who are without insurance. And we have certain mandates that we have to do and that is described in the Mental Health Code. So for them to get away from the 46 contracts, you'd have to change the Mental Health Code. So even in the beginning, they said, we don't want to manage 46 contracts. They went to 18. Well, they went, they really increased. They went to 46 plus 18. So now it's 46 plus 10. So they do say they want to improve outcomes by seeing more consistent array of services, like whether you live in Wayne County, Macomb, St. Clair, anywhere, Upper Peninsula, that you'd see the same type of Medicaid services across the State of Michigan. They also want to see more standardization with the rates of services. There's a lot of variation between rates, between counties in rates for the same types of services. Some of that is due to demographic or geographic factors and some of it, actually, a lot of it, I think, has to do with how rates are actually determined because there's not really clear instructions on how you determine the rates for services. So some boards include more things into the, to build the rate for the service than others. So that's something that needs to be cleaned up. They also hope that this will improve our capacity for electronic health records and that's kind of an interesting one too, because the THUMM Alliance and Genesee, we both have electronic health records that are fully functional, but they're different. So in the new Region 10, we will have to eventually have the same electronic health record. One of us is going to have to change and that's, that's a lot of cost involved with that. The one thing I do think is true is that it doesn't hand to the sharing of technology, service technology specifically with evidence-based practices. That's what we look to when we talk about ways that we want to provide services to people with mental illness, developmental disabilities. We look for what's the best practice in the field. And through our alliance with Santa Lac and Lapeer, we, we have periodic meetings where we present how we're doing a particular program. Like there's this, a program, just a quick example called In Shape. And it is really, because it's so important to address a person's physical health as well as their mental health, so In Shape program focuses on physical health things and as a result of that, mental health improves. Even just simple things like self-esteem, depression, et cetera. And that's an evidence-based practice that was developed through Dartmouth University. So as a result of Lapeer doing that, we saw it, we do it now, Santa Lac County does it. It's a great program. So that's, that's just one example. The, the department wants, hopes that this reduces the potential for the conflict of interest. And what they mean by that is currently St. Clair County Community Mental Health is also the managing entity. We manage the Medicaid money for the three counties, including ourselves. So they see that as a potential conflict. The only thing I think that's interesting about that is Macomb County gets to be, will remain a standalone. They are a PIHP and they are a provider and that doesn't need to change. Oakland County, same situation. And so that part doesn't make total sense to me. I probably shouldn't give all my opinions in here, but I'm kind of opinionated. The other thing is, they do want that the new PIHP, the managing entity, to be jointly owned and governed by the CMH agencies. So for example, the way we're achieving that in Region 10, there will, there will be a board that will oversee the management of this entity and there will be two representatives from each county. And then there will also be five at-large members that have to, that have to represent certain areas, like there has to be a person that represents people with mental illness, either because they have one or they are closely involved with somebody, developmental disabilities, children's mental health issues, substance use disorders, and primary healthcare.
Can I ask you a question? You have that, the way it was structured prior to in the flow chart, now you're going to have five on the bottom. I'm not sure what the SUD is.
The SUD is the, is Substance Use Disorder. That's the coordinating agency for Substance Use Disorder Services?
Need another acronym.
I know. I'm sorry.
From this, you're going to have District 10 oversee all five.
Correct.
Now, how many jobs are going to be lost or gained? How many movements, lateral movements could be? Before, was St. Clair County in charge of the other three counties?
Yes.
And that's no longer going to happen. So we're going to have personnel at the St. Clair level. Are they moving over to oversee or are we losing jobs?
The hope is that we will be able to move some of our staff that currently work for the PIHP portion of our operation into Region 10. Will there be some job loss? I can't, I can't really predict that at this point because there will be some, there will be some consolidation of effort. So, but our hope is, we have some of the best people in, in those positions and I'm hoping that that's how that works out. There is actually, will be an additional CEO because the, the new PIHP will have a chief executive officer or executive director. And then there's the four of us. Currently, I serve as both the PIHP Director and the Director of Community Mental Health and so does Dan Russell in Genesee County. So there's a new position. There's also a new Chief Financial Officer because those, those positions cannot be tied to any of the CMHs in this new model.
Office of H.
Oh, oops, I skipped that page. They also said that they hope it will help us position for the future healthcare in terms of especially ensuring that in a region, you have enough population to bear risk because we're currently in a shared risk environment or contract with the department, meaning that we're at risk up to seven and a half percent over our budget. Beyond that, the department would start to kick in money. In a full risk, we would be responsible for anything we went over. And the only thing that doesn't make 100% sense on that is that they left the Upper Peninsula region alone. That red region, whatever was the first color, it stayed its own region. It is smaller than the THUMM Alliance. So, but they're going to stay a region. So that part doesn't make 100% sense either. And then the other, other thing is, again, to have large enough population to accommodate this thing called management of the dual eligibles. That's, that is something, dual eligible refers to people with Medicare and Medicaid. It's talked about in the Affordable Care Act. And it is basically saying in the Affordable Care Act that services for that population needs to be much better, much more efficient. There is a lot, that population, people with those two insurances costs, they take up, for example, in St. Clair County, they make up 25% of the people we serve, but they account for 50% of our budget because their needs are so great. So there needs to be better coordination of services and things like that. So, and then the last one was just better integration, or better access to healthcare integration, resources, and technology. Obviously, the whole country is trying to move more into a more integrated healthcare system and we are too. And again, they're trying to match up what, the rush, I guess, with all this is to match up with other things going on, including Medicaid expansion, health insurance exchanges, the dual eligible initiative that I just talked about, the Medicaid waiver, and also the coordinating agency. That's the agency that serves substance abuse integration. Just to kind of give you an idea of what we're talking about, Genesee CMH currently, or Genesee County has a population of 422,000 plus. The THUMM Alliance, within, you can, our total population for the three counties is just under 300,000. So the three of us together are not as big as Genesee County. Next, this slide shows you the number of people that currently have Medicaid and that we receive funding for because that's how we get our money. Based on the number of people with Medicaid, we receive a set amount of money every month for every person enrolled in Medicaid. So Genesee has 91,000 people enrolled and receiving payments for. The THUMM Alliance has almost 46,000. And then the next column shows our capitation payments and, and then they have a support waiver. That's additional money received and it is, it's, that's a Medicaid waiver program. It's still Medicaid money. But you can just see a comparison of how big it is combined. The next slide shows a number of cases or people that are actually served by Genesee, Lapeer, Santa Lac, St. Clair. The THUMM Alliance in total, not counting the coordinating agency, which is the substance use. And then we have, Genesee doesn't, didn't have theirs broke out separately. And you can see the service costs associated with serving that number of people. So it is, I should have probably had the whole total there, but I don't. But you can see it's over, well over $200 million. We also, there's also a program, I, I think you might be familiar, it's called the Adult Benefit Waiver. That is a Medicaid waiver program. Also, people receive a certain amount of coverage, but it's just not as extensive as Medicaid. They have certain periods of enrollment for that entitlement. April this month is, they opened the enrollment. It's been closed for many months, but it's open now. So if you know anybody that's uninsured, they need to go to Department of Human Services and apply for the Adult Benefit Waiver because the enrollment closes the 30th of this month. And that's the money we receive for the, the folks that are enrolled in the program. So it's not a huge number, but... The, the next couple of slides, it's actually a timeline and I'm going to go through it kind of quickly, but because I, this was more relevant for other presentations that I did, but you know, basically, I told you in February that AFP came out. That was the proposal we had to respond to. We turned it in April 1st, but there were certain things they said we could have until July 1st because there's actually things, you know, we have to file with the Secretary of State. We have to dissolve our current arrangement, which is an ITFRA agreement. And we have to select a full board of directors. We have to have a chief executive officer selected. We have to have all these new policies in place. There is a lot of things that have to be done. So they're giving us till July 1st, which is still not very much time, but, so that's when we'll have all the enabling resolutions completed, filed, and as I said, the board members identified and also the lead staff. Then in September, we should hear about approval or not approval of the programs that we have. And then in October this year, they're telling us we'll have to have our new PIHP entity accredited. Currently, our, our programs are accredited, not the PIHP. And they're going to, they're going to tell us what kind of accreditation we have to seek. And then we'll do full implementation by January of 2014. These are just, this highlights the sections of the document, the AFP. Not going to go through those in depth. If anybody looks through any of this and has questions at a later date, you can comment. I'd be happy to discuss it in more detail. So again, just some of those requirements I wanted to highlight because initially, our board said, well, why, why do you have to do this? Why, why don't you tell me you're not going to do it? Well, you can't do that because if you do that, and you can't even change to partner with somebody else. So we, we didn't have much choice in the beginning because of our land, sort of landlocked situation of St. Clair County. You have to be contiguous with the other counties in your region. So that left Macomb and then Santa Lac and Lapeer. And so, but because Lapeer touches Genesee, that's why they get to be in our region. Macomb, they had us with Macomb in one of the scenarios, but Macomb was able to lobby heavily in Lansing and they let them, let them be a stay alone. Although a problem with Macomb County is they're not an authority, so that would be issues too, mixing the authority with a CMH department. Or county department, I mean. So anyways, and in this situation, we have the right of first opportunity or first, as long as what we submit meets the department's standards and requirements, then we're good. If, if it doesn't, they could, they could choose to bid out the region to anybody. They can do a full, open, competitive bid. It could be other CMHs or it could be like Blue Cross or Magellan Health Plans or whoever. We are certainly hoping that that doesn't happen. Oh, and then, actually, I missed a good point though. If it is open and depending on who it, who, if somebody else, a private entity, were to be awarded the contract or even a public, like Medicaid health plans, things like that, there's no requirement to have boards. There'd be no, the oversight that we currently have and the arrangements that we currently have, that would not exist in, in that scenario. We, we do, I think I already mentioned, we've been putting together the PIHP board. We're calling it a steering committee right now because it's not a board yet until we have an entity that it's the board of. So that's been happening and I talked about the selection of the chief executive officer has to happen by that board and we're currently in the process of finalizing the bylaws. So I'm going to pause for a second. I know it's a lot of information. I've been living and breathing it every day for a while, so can I talk fast? I don't know if there's any other questions or...
I'm just going to help your position out, what you stated earlier. So what you're saying is Macomb and Oakland County, they get to maintain their CEO and chief financial officer, we have to come up with somebody new and a whole new board.
Yeah. So some of those things don't really make sense to me and, and you know, we've tried, our, our board association has tried hard to, you know, say, can, can you answer some of these questions? And there's not really good answers that I've heard. I mean, somebody might have them, but I have not been privy to them. So the next thing I wanted to talk a little bit about is Medicaid expansion. And I know Howard, Commissioner Heidemann referenced that earlier, that he was at the Health Department and actually, Dr. Mergantat is going to be a part of a panel with me that I'm going to give you, the data's on the back of this for Medicaid expansion forum through Mercy Hospital, next, next May 1st. So anyways, let me just get to this. So some of the, let me just tell you, before I get into that, I guess...
Can I ask one question before we get into this?
Sure.
This is going to happen. I know there was a lot of debate.
It's not, it's not a done deal.
Okay.
That's why I'm talking to you. Because we're hoping, you know, we need more people to lobby and advocate for Medicaid expansion. I think most of you know that the governor is in support of Medicaid expansion. And actually, one of the resources I put in your packet is a report that he had commissioned through the Senate Fiscal Agency. It was done in March of this year, so it's very current with numbers and his projections about what it, what it will do and save for the State of Michigan. And I tried to summarize some of those. There's also some other documents, like from Jackson Hewitt. There's a list of entities in the state that are supporting Medicaid expansion. And then you all know who needs to be contacted if you wanted to advocate, but that's in there too, if you want it. And also just, you know, locally, Mercy Hospital, Trinity Health Systems is advocating for Medicaid expansion. All the hospitals really are that I'm aware of. A lot of the chambers of commerce are, although I'm not sure if the State Chamber of Commerce has taken an official position on it yet. But anyways, what Medicaid expansion, in case people are not quite all familiar with it, it's expanding the Medicaid benefit to people who are at 133% of the federal poverty level. That's about 30,000 for a family of four. That's about 30,000 for a family of four. So that would serve approximately 320,000 Michiganders in 2014, and then it did, and up to 470,000 by the year 2021. Research indicates that 20% of these individuals will experience a mental health or substance use disorder sometime in their adult life. And I'm gonna get to why, and act, well, actually, the Anderson Economic Group did a study that estimated that better access to mental health would result in annual savings between five and eight million dollars in the state of Michigan, due to fewer persons with mental illness in jails or prisons. And if, you know, you talk to people, and I'm sure the sheriff here has talked to you before, about the problems that we have with the number of people with mental illness that land in our jails, and, and it's also in the prisons. We do provide services, but it's not a good option. And the, some statements on the impact on Michigan's economy, the federal government will be covering the full cost of expansion for the first three years. Then the long-term obligation that they're saying is that we would be, state of Michigan or all states would pay 10%, the feds would get, kick in 90%. In Michigan, there, the estimate, the estimate is that we would save 206 million in general fund in the first year, that's in Governor Snyder's document. And his plan would be to put away 103 million of that, and every year thereafter, he would put half of the savings away to use it at the time we have to pay the 10%. There would be no net cost to Michigan for expansion over the next 21 years, that's according to the Senate Fiscal Agency report. Michigan will receive over $30 billion in new federal dollars between 2014 and 2023. We would save about 320 million in uncompensated care costs in that timeframe. And also, Medicaid expansion will keep federal tax dollars in Michigan and help create jobs instead of sending it out to the other states. Obviously, there's big benefits to the workforce, it will create more healthcare jobs, and healthcare is actually like the leading employer in, in the state of Michigan, various, whether it's physical healthcare, mental healthcare, and that will help create more healthcare jobs. And, and so in effect, would then contribute to a better economy and provide a healthier, more stable, reliable workforce. Just to give you an idea of what it means for St. Clair County, we have two scenarios, and these were scenarios done by the Health Management Associates Group, and they, they did it for every county in the state at the request of the Department of Community Health. If you just went with a moderate growth assumption of only 57% of people eligible would enroll, we currently have, in May of 2011, we had 32,000-plus people enrolled, and by 20, in 2014, we would have 40,300, so about 8,000 more. And then, you can see, if you assume a little bit higher growth, assuming 73% of the people will enroll, it goes, that number goes up to 43, so it's over 10,000 more people. And that's, that's per month, that's the number of eligibles we'd have per month, and again, that's what our budgets are based on, to provide the services.
Just a comment, putting this together then, you're saying that by providing insurance for another, about 8,000 people, roughly, Michigan will save about 320 million in uncompensated care costs?
And I think, and, and if, we invite all of you to the forum, that is gonna be at Mercy Hospital, being sponsored by Mercy Hospital, actually, on the first, but the hospitals will tell you how much they lose every year providing emergency care services to people with no health insurance. They lose a lot of money, and, which drives up healthcare costs. And I just wanted to tell you, in St. Clair County, another thing, we currently have 107 people in this county waiting, they're on our waiting list for mental health services because we do not have enough general fund dollars to provide this service. And by the Michigan Mental Health Code, we're only mandated to provide crisis, crisis intervention and inpatient psychiatric hospitalization. That's all we have to provide. That's not very smart to only wait and do those things, because that costs a lot of money. Inpatient care is close to $700 a day. So, though, we wanna get people before they get that bad. We, we do provide some level of services, but we can't do it all, because we have less than $4 million and a lot of people. But, so there's 107 people on the list. Another interesting fact that would get services under this scenario, but another interesting fact is that we've had 240 individuals since the start of this fiscal year hospitalized in psychiatric inpatient hospital, Port Huron Hospital, whatever other hospitals, Harbor Oaks, and, because they had extreme mental health conditions. And 33% of 78 of those people did not have insurance. So though, we have to pay for their care almost $500,000 out of our general fund. And again, I think we are, I, I don't like quoting exact numbers when I have it in front of me, but our general fund is about, I think, three, three and a half million dollars. So, 500,000 out the door in the first half of the year has gone to inpatient care. We also pay for prescriptions for people that were, that were receiving services from us that don't have coverage. That's another, so far, so far this year, about $50,000. So, that's a lot of money, and those people would all be eligible for Medicaid under this scenario.
Well, if I could ask you, take the other side of the question, observation that Howard made, but you also have a statement here, that Michigan will receive over $30 billion in new federal dollars between 2014, 2023. By taking average of 50, that's gonna add 1.5 trillion to the federal deficit, isn't it? So even though we're gonna get money from the federal, where are they getting the money from, to cover that one and a half trillion dollars?
I could not possibly answer that question.
But it's still, I mean, we're gonna save, same we're saving in Michigan, but we're gonna still lose it. Somebody's gotta come up with that money.
You're right, somebody does, and, and mo, most of the other states are going, I think are moving forward on Medicaid expansion. So if Michigan doesn't, we're gonna lose out on the money that we could be getting while it's happening. So, I, I've talked with our senator, I've talked with our state representatives, and I know that they don't share our opinion on this, at this point, but, you know, maybe they'll change their minds, I don't know. That's my hope.
Any questions for Debbie?
Thank you.
The last one, quick thing I just wanted to say, was besides the forum, if you want to attend, is I, we hope to see you at our annual meeting, it's May.
You don't have a particular spot on that, do you, yet? Because Rebecca had emailed me, and I sent it out to the guys, where the community forum's gonna be at specifically?
Yeah, well, I just know it's at Mercy Hospital.
Okay.
It's gonna be Mercy Hospital, yes, because I heard they wanted you to sit on the panel.
Yes.
So, so anyways, that, and then also, if you would like to come to our annual meeting, it's May 7th, I, I believe you all received invitations, love to see ya. Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, Deb. Item B, the approval of county disbursements.
At this time, I'd like to approve the county of St. Clair disbursements for the month of March of 2013 in the amount of $30,798,377.50%.
I'll support that.
Any discussion on any of them at all?
Roll call.
Commissioner Tomlin?
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Chairman Bone?
Yes.
Item number C, Resolution 13-6, supporting the submission of a comprehensive economic development strategy partnership planning grant application. I do have Jeff Donaldson in attendance here, if anybody has any questions on, on that, I know.
I do have a question, it doesn't have to be directed toward him.
Okay, well, whomever.
And, you know, I had quite a few questions before, and I still have pretty much the same question, because we don't have an itemized where this money is gonna be spent from the grant yet, potentially for infrastructure, but we don't know where we're gonna have it. But, my question would probably be, for the budget purposes, can we have this come out of their current line item budget? Because we got a very tight budget, this 15,000, can we have it potentially taken right out of their current budget line item, rather than an additional 15,000?
Correct. Was it five in in-kind?
Right, correct, but either way, you're hitting the 15,000. I'd rather have it come out of their EDA's current funding line item, rather than an additional funding, because we got some funding issues that we're gonna have to address.
Well, if I could address that, from the in-kind contribution that we made, the $5,000 in-kind staff time, the Metropolitan Planning Commission met yesterday, and the same request was made of them to support the application, and they had similar questions about where the, the $5,000 potential budgeted in-kind services have come from. And staff from Metropolitan Planning Commission sat down, took a look at the type of possible work that would go in, go into this, taking into account the fact that, at this time, we're also gonna be updating the county's master plan this year. It's most likely, in fact, 99.9% share, almost all the work that will be going towards this in terms of in-kind services, would be work that's being done in preparation of the county's master plan anyways. So it's work that's already budgeted for, it's work, it's time that's already budgeted for in our budget going forward, in terms of staff time. And that's where a lot of our contribution is gonna go for that. As far as the hard dollar match that is being requested as part of this grant application, I have spoken with the county administration about it, and they did identify that there is funds available in the county's economic development fund, not separate from the general fund, that could be used. This fits the criteria for which, how those dollars could be used, and that could be tapped into for that, that hard, hard dollar contribution.
Steve?
Point of clarification, this grant, I think Dave's question was, this grant to benefit the EDA, they're asking for us to approve them to apply for the grant, but you want us, you wanna make sure that the, there's no additional monies provided for that, from the general fund or the economic development fund, that it come from their current $300,000 or whatever it is we give them a year, is that what you're saying, Dave?
That's correct, you know, for the 5,000, but kind of, if I understood you correctly, that's where the money's coming from anyways?
Well, Bill, is that how that would work? Would it come out of their current, are they asking for more money, or are they asking to take it out of their current, what we currently give them?
No, I, I think, first of all, the funding that's provided to the EDA, the county EDA, is separate from all of this. That is around $350,000 that's provided to the EDA, as our membership in the EDA.
Separate from all of this, what's all of this?
From our discussion at the present time. It says, St. Clair County, the Economic Development Alliance of St. Clair County on this document, we're not suggesting, and I don't think that Jeff or the planning commission is suggesting, that funds be taken away from the commitment that we have made to the EDA to match this, the grant, to provide the cash match. What I have told Jeff, when he approached me on this, is we do have a separate economic development line item. We've talked about using a great deal of that, the majority of that, to help with balancing the 2013 budget. We talked about that in a workshop a short time ago. Those are funds that have been set aside and built up over a period of time, they're grant and loan dollars that we use.
What is that fund currently at? What number?
That, it wasn't around, I think, 800-some thousand, and then we took funds for the budgeting, or balancing the budget. Do you remember how much that was? 400, maybe? Jeez, I don't have.
A significant amount in there, this is a significant amount of money in that fund.
There is a significant amount in the fund, yes, yes. And the other, you know, the other source of funding we receive, as part of the royalties we get out at the landfill with the bioreactor, there is a separate $50,000 a year that DTE pays the county, that is to be used for economic development purposes.
Is this grant part, is this grant meant to benefit the EDA generally? Is this something that benefits EDA?
No, this, no, it does not benefit the EDA. It benefits the county and the region as a whole.
Benefits one of EDA's objectives, perhaps?
It benefits one of their objectives, but certainly one of ours as well. I think, as Jeff indicated, a lot of the work that the planning department would be doing in, for the SEDs, is actually work they're doing to update the master plan anyways. Determining demographic information, infrastructure information, capacity information, information about our workforce, what the needs of the community may be to support private sector investment, what kind of prioritization communities have gone through to establish a list of what they would like to do to help generate or stimulate private sector investment. Those are things they do anyways, through creation of the county's master plan. So there's a lot of overlap right here. The only cash that will go out the door of the county towards this project is that $5,000 match.
So I wasn't sure if Commissioner Rushing's comments were in the nature of a motion to amend the motion, or just a question?
Well, I'd like to have it, because, the way I see it, part of our discussion earlier with the healthcare, and we got the convention center, we're dedicating a lot of money to economic development. And why can't we cut their budget? If it's only 5,000, why can't we take that out of EDA money, rather than taking it out of our other funds? They should be making a sacrifice too, in the county, rather than just, you know.
Is there, is there support for what Dave wants to do, I guess? Do you have to call that, or you wanna struggle with it, or how do you wanna do that?
Well, if it's the nature of a motion, if it's a na, are you, if you make.
I would like to make that motion, that the money comes out of the EDA current funding.
I'll second it, so you can at least call the question on it.
Call, yeah, roll call on that?
You wanna state the question, clerk, so we know what the question is?
Commissioner Samasko?
Oh, I'm sorry?
Do you wanna state the ques, you understand how you phrased your question, is it positive or negative?
Well, the way I understand it, is it's essentially with a motion that, that you're gonna approve it, but the funding would come out of the current annual budget of the economic development.
Correct.
Alliance, or whatever the acronym is.
As an amendment to the current motion to take it out of the economic development fund?
Right. Actually, the addition, because the way I see it, it's not, it's just that you're gonna approve it and submit it, the funding isn't even necessarily stated in the motion. You're actually putting a stipulation in.
Correct. The current EDA funding, that we're funding the economic development.
So if fails, you'll then vote on the main motion?
It would have to, it would have to fail, and then you'd have to come back with another motion.
If passes, you'll vote on it as amended.
The main motion isn't on the floor yet.
Well.
That's correct.
So you're, you, what are you, what are you making a motion on, though? There's nothing on the floor to make a motion on.
It was open for discussion, was, how did that?
So you're making a motion to, to get the funding from someplace, but you haven't even approved the action yet?
Harper, the, the formula needs to be done here in the process.
Let me, let me ask you this.
I thought where on item C was called, there's no motion made to, to move item C for vote, yet, that's a technicality. And then he talked about amending item C, so, I don't.
Well, let me ask you this, if, 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 tell me if this is a motion that is acceptable to you, being the person. You're gonna adopt Resolution 1306, supporting the submission of a comprehensive economic development strategy partnership planning grant, application by the I-69 International Trade Corridor, NEX Michigan Development Corporation, and the United States Economic Development Administration, with funding out of the economic development alliance current year budget?
Correct.
Now, what you don't wanna do, though, is you wanna be able to vote on that as originally presented, if it doesn't pass, that's the only thing. So, that would then be a mu, it would be a different motion if made.
Just make a second motion, we're moving to that.
He can do it this way, and the second motion would be different anyway, I mean, it would still be okay, but, however you guys wanna do it. I just wanna make sure.
Okay, so which one are you doing first? You're doing the, what he has paid the motion on?
You're, as I understand it, you are offering up a motion to approve the submission of the grant application to develop a community economic development strategy. And, and what you're adding, Commissioner Rushing, is that the funding will come from the existing allocation for the economic development alliance for 2013.
And if that fails, the next motion would be an open motion that you guys could delegate funding from whatever other source you see fit.
It would be a different motion, which would be appropriate.
Correct, right.
Is that acceptable to you, Dave?
Yes, it is. Is that acceptable as a second?
That's fine, I just wanna make sure we're clear on it.
Commissioner Samasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop?
Yes.
Commissioner Tommy?
No.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Heidemann?
No.
Commissioner Riley?
No.
Chairman Bone?
No.
Fails. Mr. Chairman?
Yes. I'd like to offer a motion that we submit the comprehensive economic development strategy partnership plan grant for the I-69 International Trade Corridor, NEX Michigan Development Corporation, to the United States Economic Development Administration.
Second?
And we understand that would be then paid from this economic development fund, correct?
Correct, the 5,000 would come from that funding source.
Howard?
There was a second, right?
Yeah.
I, I would just like to clarify, what this plan, if we're awarded this grant, will allow us to do is, as a region, access all of these different federal funds that are available to regions and not to specific counties.
Absolutely. What, what, or specifically, what this grant will do, allow us to create the plan, the strategy, a living document, if you will, that will identify those kind of projects that can be funded by federal categories of funding that would normally not be accessible to our region unless we had something like this in place.
And that could, those funds for, let's say, public works projects or whatever, could go to any community in the region?
That's correct.
So even though you're not in the I sixty-nine corridor economic, next Michigan Economic Development Corporation, your community could still get funds?
The four county region is eligible.
Excellent.
And my understanding is in some cases, the match would actually be less.
That's correct, yes. That's right. Because they reward the regional effort and thus it drives down match requirements. And, not all, but some cases, yes, I have seen that.
And in your, in your report, you list these agencies and several of these are agencies that we're currently receiving funding from now as a county.
Correct. And for certain types of projects, the, by having, by developing a strategy identifying future large-scale projects that might have infrastructure needs or some things along those lines that normally would not have eligibility for those type, for federal funds for the work necessary for cer, by being part of this comprehensive economic development strategy. It gets your foot in the door for being eligible for those funds.
I think we have some really great programs that are being funded by these federal agencies and I think there may be some in the future that we want access to. And that's why I've made the motion in favor of this, of this plan.
Plan, no cash. That's how it works, it's pretty simple.
Well, if you don't have a plan, your plan failed.
Well, I don't have an issue with the money if it's out there and we're going to apply for the grant. I just think we've got to make cuts and everybody needs to be putting something at the table. And economic development gets a great benefit from this board already. And they've got nothing on the table with this.
Okay.
Just to comment. When you're talking about economic development in our community, you have to remember that the people that benefit are the citizens in our community that get jobs, the businesses that get increased revenue coming into their cash box. So that's the benefit of economic development.
I said I agree with that.
Oh, okay.
What I don't agree with is that they shouldn't have something on the table to help benefit. There's one more out there.
Colm, you guys can argue after the fact.
Commissioner Tommy?
Roll call.
Yes. Commissioner Greathaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Smasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
No.
Commissioner Heideman?
Yes.
Commissioner Riley?
No.
Chairman Bone?
Yes.
Moving on, item number D, the library internet connection agreement.
Mr. Chair, I would move the approval of the library internet connection agreement with RISA in the amount of seventy-nine thousand eight hundred dollars for a term of seven, one, two thousand thirteen through six, thirty, two thousand fourteen.
Support? We've got Allison here if anyone's got any questions.
None.
Seeing none, roll call.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Commissioner Heideman?
Yes.
Commissioner Smasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Tommy?
Yes.
Commissioner Greathaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Chairman Bone?
Yes. Item number E, the two thousand ten emergency management grant agreement.
Mr. Chairman, at this time I move to approve the two thousand ten emergency management performance grant agreement in the amount of four thousand two hundred fifty-seven dollars.
Support? That is just additional monies, correct?
Yep.
Coming in, so no local. All in favor?
I agree.
Those opposed. Item number F, two thousand eleven emergency management planning grant agreement.
Eleven F, let's meet, thank you. To approve, move this time to approve the two thousand eleven emergency management planning grant agreement in the amount of twelve thousand nine hundred fifty-one dollars.
Second? Same thing, all in favor?
I agree.
Those opposed. Item number G, just looking for a motion to receive and file the equalization report.
So move.
Do I need to adopt the resolution thirteen oh seven, approving the two thousand thirteen St. Clair County equalization report?
Got it.
I'm sorry, second from Mr. Riley. All in favor?
I agree.
I agree.
Item number H, professional service agreement with CTI and associates.
Mr. Chairman, item, excuse me, approve the professional service agreement with CTI and associates for engineering services at Smith Creek landfill. The amount of not to exceed three million or a term of April first, thirteen through twelve, thirty-one of sixteen.
Support? Any questions, Bill?
How did we arrive at that three million dollar figure? Not to exceed three million dollars.
Generally look at all the work that they have, kind of coming up and then you put a not to exceed number on it.
Correct.
Okay, because, because they're on a job basis or an hourly basis, whatever it is, we just cap it so they can't go over that.
Correct. Some of the work that they do is just like that, hourly or per job.
Just wanted to know where it came from.
Correct me if I'm wrong. They could go over that, but they'd have to come back and get us to approve.
Correct.
Steve?
Bill, is that much of a change from previous agreements or is that?
It's actually down.
Actually, the rate is a reduction in our rates and.
I thought this was part of that process of renegotiating that.
Exactly.
Consultants involved with and so forth.
Correct. So we were able to save some significant funds.
Wanted to note that.
In the contract.
And I believe that our landfill guys thought that was a pretty good deal they were giving us.
Yeah, our landfill consultant, they went and actually bid these services out to a whole array of individuals and they came back and felt that we were still getting a good bang for our buck from CTI.
Okay.
Okay. Roll call?
Commissioner Greathaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Heideman?
Yes.
Commissioner Tommy?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Commissioner Smasco?
Yes.
Chairman Bone?
Yes.
Resolution thirteen oh five authorizing two thousand thirteen limited tax general obligation refunding bonds for the administration building. Mr. Chairman? Yes.
I'd like to move the resolution authorizing the two thousand thirteen limited tax general obligation refunding bonds for the administration building.
Support? Discussion. Nice chunk of money?
Four hundred and sixty thousand over eight years.
Roll call.
Commissioner Heideman?
Yes.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Commissioner Greathaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Smasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Tommy?
Yes.
Chairman Bone?
Yes.
Item J, the Parks and Recreation Millage Pull Ahead Proposal.
Mr. Chair, I would like to move the approval of the local millage distribution pull ahead program proposal to address local communities' emergency needs with each request being evaluated by the Park and Rec Commission.
I would support that motion.
Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor?
I agree.
Administrator's report.
Early this month, some representatives of SEMCOG that have been helping us with the bioreactor and landfill issues for many years arranged a meeting with the director of the DEQ and some of his chief staff. The landfill director and I met with them. We talked about what our issues and concerns are for expansion of the bioreactor. We talked about some proposed changes that are out there for the State Solid Waste Planning Act. There are a number of issues and concerns we laid out on the table and they are digging into those, looking at those. They have agreed on our behalf to send a letter to the EPA asking them to allow us to move forward with the extension of our permit. As you may recall, right now, we do have a cap of twelve years on our permit. We're into our seventh year. We could get it to the end of the twelve-year period and the EPA could say, thank you very much. You did a great job on the project, but we're not going to allow you to do it any longer. That is a concern of ours. It's a concern of the state of Michigan, the DEQ, because they feel that this is a very successful project that could be used elsewhere in the state of Michigan. And they've agreed to advocate on our behalf with the EPA to move this forward. We'll be meeting again with them in about a month to review a number of the issues that were left on the table. We've had some great help from some of the SEMCOG staff that again have been involved in this project from day one. The administration has been meeting with the landfill director and consultants on a report that we're preparing for the board to address some of the long-term financial needs. You may recall a couple of weeks ago when we had some discussions about some changes in our fees and our fee structure. We have been reviewing those with our consultants, with the landfill operator or engineer to understand what some of the long-term ramifications will be. We have met with legal counsel to talk about the legal issues that could result from this. And we do expect to deliver a report and a recommendation to the board in probably the next several weeks. We did have a meeting with the Economic Growth Alliance. This is a group that was formed probably about six years ago by the communities primarily that run along the northern edge of the Detroit metro area. They include Livingston County, LaPierre, Genesee, St. Clair County, Oakland County, and it now includes Macomb County as well. To talk about some of the regional economic development challenges that we face. A big one that's come up lately and one that has really hit home here is workforce development issues. Many of our manufacturers throughout the region are discovering that they cannot locate a qualified workforce to fill the jobs that they've got available. So developing a long-term pipeline of skilled employees to meet the needs of our manufacturers just does not exist at the present time. They recently conducted, the EGA group recently conducted a survey of about fifteen hundred employers within the region. They are compiling the results of that survey and will be sharing it with us soon. And we'll be developing some kind of a strategy to try and move forward, looking towards the MEDC to help us implement that strategy. The purchase of some additional assets out at the airport has been completed. We've been talking about that for many, many months. We closed on the purchase of the last piece of property yesterday. So all of the land out there now is under the county's control. We do have an interim agreement with the current FBO to continue providing FBO services. We're finalizing some of the terms of that agreement as we speak. And the FBO proposal committee has met once. We did solicit proposals for a replacement FBO. That committee has met one time to start looking at and reviewing some of those proposals. They're developing a list of questions and then they'll be interviewing the potential candidates as we move forward. We did meet with the lobbyists this week to talk about our, the grant program that they provide to us. We have developed some ideas on how we might be able to get information out to departments in a more efficient and effective manner to take advantage of the services they can provide to us. And we'll be implementing those at the department head meeting in May. Just to give you a quick update on the convention center. As you know, the first portion of that project that the county will be involved in will be the renovations to the existing ballroom. And we're scheduled to open the ballroom the same time the hotel and the restaurant opens as well. We are finalizing some of the furnishings or the finishes, wall covering, carpet, things like that. There is an interior decorator that is putting forward ideas. Our consultants, Dave Greizo and Bill Kruger, are reviewing those to tell us what they feel is appropriate and inappropriate given the current marketplace. We are also in the process of developing an inventory of equipment and material that will be needed. And shortly we'll be going out for bid on things like the tables and the chairs and the tableware. So right now, we're looking at a final design for the convention center. Probably within the next thirty to forty-five days, we'll be released. And at that point, all of the construction documents, bidding documents will be reviewed by all of the parties. They'll probably be given one more quick overview to ensure that we are complying with all the necessary and appropriate codes. And then those documents will be going out for bid, probably sometime in June. You've probably noticed a lot of changes up there. We did get to see a quick view of Baker and what the exterior will look like. There will be a lot of changes to what you see there right now. A lot of people are concerned that it looks like it's not finished and they're hoping that that's not the finish of it. And I can tell you, it is not finished. There is additional work that needs to be done in the exterior of Baker as well as the Edison Inn. There will be some very common design elements throughout the entire campus. Some of their final decisions are waiting on decisions by us and what we're going to do with the convention center and the exhibit hall. So once those are finalized, some of the same color schemes will be followed throughout. That's, there's also a financial report in your packet that is, was prepared by Kerry Hepting. If you have any questions about that, feel free to give us a call. And that's, that's it.
I have one question on the bidding when that goes out. That, that's going to be tables et cetera, will that go to locals, I assume, too?
Yes. That, they'll be bid the same way that we bid anything that we do here locally. So yeah, there'll be big banquet tables and chairs and things like that.
Any other questions for Bill?
I think just one, the contract that John out there, does he have the same, he has to potentially get up to seventy-five percent local contract?
One comment I do want to make about the project is somebody brought this to my attention and it was totally false, that the county gave Baker College the property. And this is somebody I would assume that knew what was going on, I guess. So just for the record, if you ever hear that, the county did not give Baker College that property. Baker College purchased that property, so. Received and filed, my motion received and filed by the administrator's court. I would so move. Support? All in favor?
I agree.
Miscellaneous business. Received and filed.
Oh, that's me. Mr. Chairman, at this time I would move to receive and file the packets that were sent to the commissioners, package center places and other information presented.
All in favor?
I agree.
Chairman?
Motion.
Support? All in favor?
I agree.